Before we pray, let's have a moment of silence for all the people in 9/11. And remember them, and then we'll pray. Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that we have to come and meet tonight and do the county business. Father, we just want to remember the families in 9/11 that lost their loved ones and are still hurting and grieving and just some of them never got over it. And Father, we just want to remember them tonight, hold them up to you. We pray for our local Sheriff's Department, EMS, and Fire as they go about each day to protect our county and our citizens. We thank you for them. And Father, just, we also want to lift up the men and women fighting for our freedom that we might stand here tonight, pray to you, salute the flag, and do the things openly and freely that we can do. Just be with us, go through this meeting, give each one safety through travel, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let me lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
It's the regular meeting of the Hendrick County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers in Cluiston, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darryl Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Lafferty, Clerk Barbara Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. As you noticed, tonight Commissioner Turner is not with us. He is actually out of town, so he will be back in the next regularly scheduled meeting. The first thing on agenda tonight is bids. RFP 2018-17. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir. For the record, Shane Parker, Henry County Engineer. This is RFP 2018-17. I bring before you the selection committee's recommendation for the Disaster debris removal disposal service. The committee consisted of Richard Lempel, Emergency Manager Director, myself, the Public Works Director, Al Perry, Cluiston City Manager, Ron Zerley, City Label Finance Director. We had nine firms submit, and we ranked for the cities and we ranked for the county, but the ones we're only bringing today is the county, the ones that pertain to us. And for right-of-way clearing and debris removal, including leaners, hangers, and stumps for Zone 3, which should be the eastern portion of...
You going to read all that?
Yes, sir.
I move Option 1.
All right.
Second.
But can I add something to that?
Sure.
B, there's another, there's a subset D to it, which is authorize staff to terminate the contracts with Aspirant and Crowder Golf, but we would terminate them after we got the contracts and all these firms executed.
Okay. I'll move that as well.
Then the cities have to do their own?
Cities are on their own.
Is they going to piggyback off of this?
No, sir. We, there was a separate ranking done for Zone 1, which is City of Cluiston, and I think Zone 2 was City of LaBelle.
Okay.
They'll have to work out with their boards. I don't know when that's going to their...
Did you provide that in Central County as well? Or can you?
Central County's included in this.
Oh, okay.
Central County, Port LaBelle, CDD, they're included in unincorporated Hendrick County.
Okay, so we didn't break them out.
Takes in all of Port LaBelle.
Takes in all of Port LaBelle.
Okay.
And Monture Ranch states.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going to bring us to the consent agenda.
There is consent.
Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on that?
Commissioner Byrd said something to pull.
It's in public.
Oh, okay.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's going to bring us to the awards and appearances. Ms. Davis?
So, tonight before you is an item regarding our liability and property and casualty insurance. And if it's pleasing to the board, Andy Cooper from World Risk Management is here, and he was going to do a brief presentation for you, and then I'll come up and give you our recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do you have the hard copies of that one? I know you'll, shall I bring any hard copies? Okay.
Good evening. My name's Andy Cooper. I'm with World Risk Management. We're the actual brokers for public risk management of Florida, which is an organization of 61 cities, counties, and special districts throughout Florida, of which Hendrick County was one of the founding members in 1987. I'm just going to have a quick presentation for you. As we said, 1987 PRM was started, only began with eight members. Hendrick County was one of them. The objectives of putting PRM together was lower cost, enhanced coverage, outstanding claim and loss control services, stability, self-governed by the members, each member has voting rights, which is very unusual, and also to provide professional and timely service. We have made sure, especially on the property side, that PRM has the broadest insurance coverage available for its members. It does have superior claims handling and loss control services, with online, state-of-the-art online training as well provided by the PRM office. Voting rights, one member, one vote. You actually, as a member, can vote on where the pool needs to go. One of the items, the use of surplus. Every year, the board votes on how much surplus to use, and that helps defray some of the costs for each member. There's the employment practices hotline, law enforcement hotline, and what we strive to have is immediate service from our staff or PRM staff to each member. And we do have long-tenured members, so we know exactly the history of PRM. I myself started working on the claim side in London when PRM started, so I used to handle the claims. Then I used to broke directly to Lloyd's underwriters, the renewal for PRM as a whole, and since 2001, actually, 9/11 was my second day in the office, we've been working over here as well. Since 1987, you've been a member. Since 2008, we've seen your average exposures, which is your property values and your payrolls, et cetera, go up about 18 percent. And since then, your 2016 pricing was 17 percent less than it was in 2008. So about a 35, 36 percent swing over that last 10-year period. 754,000 of surplus that PRM had built up over the years has been paid back to the county. It actually gets taken off the premiums you're asked to pay every year. Quickly on the property, state of the market. 2017 is the most costly catastrophic year for the property marketplace. They had $335 billion in losses, which is nearly three times the 10-year average of $49 billion. Extremely expensive. We had Harvey, Irma, Marie, couple of earthquakes in Mexico, the wildfires in California. And I haven't had this confirmed, but someone was telling me that the wildfires this year have already reached three-quarters of that $135 billion. So it's going to be another bad year for property. We've been told by property insurers before the bad year that they've been giving decreases year-on-year for five, six years, and the compound effect of that was they were about half of the rate they were six years ago. So they were going to have to bottom out, and then we got the losses. So we have seen an increase for PRM, and everyone's property really has been going We started off at the start of the season looking that we're going to have maybe 10 to 16 named storms of hurricanes, will be 5 to 9, major hurricanes 1 to 4. There's a lot of activity going out there right now, so let's hope that that doesn't cause too much damage for anyone, certainly for Florida as well. Auto liability, as far as the commercial rates are going up, 7.5% to 20% nationally. And public entities, we're seeing that go up 5 to 15 percent. Really, the problem with this is distracted driving, aging infrastructure, rising medical inflation, increased traffic and road activity, and the cost of vehicle repair. So we are seeing an increase in that. And then overall, general liability, public officials' liability, plus or minus 5 percent, depending on what loss experience has been. We are seeing law enforcement liability rate changes significantly higher, again, depending on the area. And then the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act is having an impact as well on public entities. So there is also pressure up in Tallahassee to change the torque cap process going forward. There was legislation that was unsuccessfully presented this year to simplify the claims process, but we're hearing that there's continued discussion up in Tallahassee about that, and then we're sure it's going to come up again next year. Workers' comp. The Florida Office Insurance Regulation approved two rate reductions this year. The first was a 9.5 percent reduction, the second was 1.8. The second one was interesting to me because it was passed through purely on the fact that the government gave tax breaks to companies, not just insurance companies, but everyone. So that's not really a workers' comp actuarial reduction. That's mainly them saying, well, you've got more money in your coffers, so you can reduce your rates. We are seeing the first responders, PTSD, work comp law comes effect 10-1. A lot of people are saying that's going to have a big effect, cost-wise, on workers' compensation, that that is not recognized by NCCI at this moment. It's probably a very good thing that it's passed, but we have heard other trusts say that they think their rates might need to go up by 10 percent because of it. And because of the rate reductions that we've seen, we don't think that there's going to be much push to change the workers' comp reform and address attorney fees not being capped for workers' comp. We've had some key improvements this year. Even though the rates went up, for property, we've increased the named windstorm limit from $85 million to $100 million. What we do is we take the $3 billion of values that we have for PRM as a whole, we model it, we come out with a probable maximum loss that we think would happen, and that's below $100 million, so we buy up to $100 million to make sure we cover the probable maximum loss. We also changed the named windstorm deductible. Instead of per building, as it is previously, and the building would be the value of the building, the contents, the EDP, property in the open associated with that building, now it's only the unit affected, and the unit is the building or the content or the EDP. So if just the building is affected, we take 2 percent of the value of the building, and that's the deductible, which is about the best deductible you can get in the marketplace. And then cyber liability, that was added to the program a few years ago. We still recommend that each entity purchases their own cyber liability policy. Every year, well, for every week for the last two to three years, front page of business insurance news is cyber liability, and it's just getting more and more prevalent. So you do have coverage with PRM, but we still think a standalone policy would be something that we can get a quote for you on. Other benefits we have, mold and fungus was added, 35,000 small limit, but a million aggregate for the pool. PRM now pays for the appraisals, property appraisals, that each member has every five years. These are a couple of things. We can get drone coverage for you. Funny enough, drones are not covered under any policy because they're considered aircraft, so all GL policies exclude aircraft. Aircraft policies don't cover drones, so you need a new one. Anytime something changes, insurance likes to get a policy for it. As with the active shooter coverage, which has probably a bit more prevalence, that we are looking into getting a coverage for the pool as a whole. Now going to the county's exposures. This is the property exposures that you have. You have $101 million, just over that in total property values. We have a blanket policy, very broad, which basically means that if something has been left off or is undervalued, you still get full replacement cost for it. Liability, you have the standard, $2 million for auto, general liability, and public officials' own emissions. And workers' comp is statutory coverage, but there is $3 million for employers' liability as well. Boiler machinery, we provide $50 million in coverage for that, and crime is $500,000. And then there's some other coverages that we can provide for the county as and when needed as well, flood insurance, et cetera. We've done extensive coverage comparisons between ourselves and our competitors. There's big differences, certainly in the property. I was here last night when the city elected to stay with PRM, and one of the items that they said was after extensive review, there's a much broader coverage with PRM than there is with the other competition out there. And when the hurricanes hit, and unfortunately they do, you get a lot more coverage. I know when 2004 came through, we had a look at the policy that you had with PRM as opposed to what you could have got at the time from the two other trusts that are out there, and I think you got paid anywhere between $4 and $7 million more because of the things like ordinance and increased costs of construction, which is a massive item for you. Flood coverage, we provide $50 million. We normally see $4 to $5 million at the most from the competition. Our deductibles, only $1,000. Theirs can be $100,000 if you're outside of flood zones AMV. And I won't go into the others. It's just, you know, this is what we do. We do these coverage comparisons just to make sure that you don't have to. The city did do an extensive one as well, though, so that was nice to know that they agreed with everything we said. Historical premiums, your premiums, 2008, it was nearly $1.5 million. Right now, it's $1.2 million, depending on what option you choose. That's a 17 percent decrease. And in that same time, your property has gone up 27 percent as your payroll, and we do use payroll to rate your workers' comp as well as your liability as well. So overall, we are seeing that all members, as I said, we're seeing rate increases in the property, but we've actually got a rate guarantee for you on the liability and the workers' comp. It only changes by whatever your payroll changes. So on that note, if there's any questions, I'll pass it over to Jennifer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you, in your original packet, there was a correction, just to put that on the record, and so we sent that out via email from what you originally got in your book. The recommendations stayed the same. So you have two options before you. The first is to decide whether you want to do a one- or a two-year renewal, and then the second is to look at having a larger deductible for workman's comp. Right now, for property liability, we have a $50,000 deductible, and we did that a few years ago, and we've saved quite a bit of money in doing that. And so, in looking at that, we kept, though, a zero deductible for workman's comp, correct?
Yes.
And so what we're looking at now is going at a $10,000 or a $25,000 possible deductible for workman's comp. They provided an analysis and gave us rates to do that, and you have it in your write-up, but the gist of it is the rate reduction is larger than our five-year average of what we would have paid if we would have had that respective $10,000 or $25,000 deductible. So we would be money ahead based on our history, our current history. And so if you chose to do that, what we would recommend from a staff level is that you, we are already planning on realizing the savings for the property that we talked about at the last meeting, the $121,000, to go to the two-year if you choose to do that, but to take the savings for the workman's comp and create a loss fund. So we would create a separate fund outside of the general fund, outside of anything else, and we would fund that premium savings, and that would help pay for those deductibles. And over time, if we have a good year, then that is your money, that is the county's money to be able to make those decisions, and it will help, for example, the disaster relief fund, you know, is depleted until we get the FEMA money coming in, and that'll be another funding source for something like that. So the staff recommendation before you is to go to a two-year renewal with a $10,000 workman's comp deductible for a total savings of $230,358 over the one-year renewal option.
Is $50,000 deductible?
It continues to be $50,000 on property liability. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I like the idea of doing a two-year. I'd entertain a motion to do Option 1, $10,000 deductible on the workman's comp.
So what, how much is the workman's comp?
It's $10,000 deductible.
It was zero before.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on this?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on the public hearings tonight, were those are both pulled to a later date, correct?
Yes, Commissioners, we need to do that for the record, go through both the public hearing items. The petition number CPA 18-0003. The applicant has requested a continuance to a date certain that would be November 13th at 5:00 here in these chambers.
Do we have to move that?
Yes.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
And B?
Yes. Petition number CPA 18-0004. Again, the applicant has requested this petition be continued to a date certain that would be November 13th at 5:00 here in these chambers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It's going to bring us to, seeing that area, the amendment to alcoholic beverages and...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've got that. We've got here a proposed ordinance amendment for you. This is following up on the discussion at the August 14th meeting to state a position about the allowance or not of alcoholic beverages at the Pioneer Community Center and the Felda Community Center, consistent with your prior discussion. I've written it up so that use or consumption in those facilities is prohibited, and there's some other related wordsmithing that's occurred, but that's the main change.
So that's Felda and Pioneer?
Felda and Pioneer are prohibited. Harlem remains subject to approval of the county administrator, you know, per the application process that we have for alcohol use there. And then the rodeo grounds is approval of the Hendrick LaBelle Recreation Board.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. This is a public hearing. Is there any members of the public who would like to address this at this time? Does everyone understand what we're talking about? It's the use of alcoholic beverages in our community centers. Does anyone? I met with, actually, the committee in Felda, and they're very, very pleased that we're looking into moving in this direction, so. Any further conversation on the board, discussion? Seeing none. Remember, do you have your hand up? Did you want to speak? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The amendment to the disaster emergency fund ordinance.
Right. This is to allow that fund to be below $3.3 million when there's a request for reimbursement from FEMA that's pending, and so that language change is added and need your approval.
I move to adopt Option 1.
I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Harris and a second by Commissioner Swindle. This is also a hearing of the public. Does anyone in the public would like to address that? Is there any discussion from the board?
Mark, we'll have to eventually change that back.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, the way that it's written is it allows you to be below 3.3 if you've got a FEMA request for reimbursement outstanding, so you may choose to decide that that's good language to have in the future when we dip below because of some other disaster.
So we could just keep it?
Yeah, just keep it, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Butler?
Yes, sir.
Mall County Cert. Tax Ordinance. This one is where the ordinance generally provides that the money is to be spent on capital projects, but it, by law, it can be spent on anything that the board authorizes, and so by ordinance, you've waived your own restriction on yourselves to allow it to be spent on anything, but you've done it on a fiscal year-by-fiscal year basis. This would extend it for another fiscal year to be used for other than capital.
I move to adopt Option 1.
A second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. This is also a public hearing. Does anyone in the public would like to address this? Seeing none, any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're almost there. Do we need to wait till 5:30?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Need to wait till 5:30.
You could skip to something else if you wanted to.
We will. We're just going to skip right on down to F then. We'll look at the adoption of the tentative millage rate. Is that, are we going to have time for that, or?
No.
That's 5:30.
Well, that's what we're going to ask, because we're at 5:27?
Can do a staff report.
We have four minutes.
Four, oh, who's going to get a staff report done in four minutes?
If you could tell them to be quiet, they'll be quiet.
Lord have mercy.
You could suspend the middle, the discussion that's happening then. You could say, okay, we're going to pick this one back up.
No, we're three minutes away, so I'm sure we can find something to talk about for three minutes.
If it pleases the Chair, we can cover Item 7A2, the consideration of the CSI Health Program within the time remaining.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
If the board remembers, well, the staff report has been provided to you in the packet. This has been a contractual relationship we've had since 2014 as a pilot program. No funds had been exchanged, no benefit has been received from the county. This was an effort to reduce our Medicaid expenses whereby if we were to create savings and the state afforded were to remit those savings to the county, we were to split 60, have a 60-40 split on every dollar that we would have saved with CSI Health. Over the past 60 days, staff has tried to reach out to CSI Health to get reports and deliverables that are due to the county because the contract expires at the end of the month, and we needed to provide notice of whether or not we were going to renew or end the contractual relationship. There has been no return of phone calls, emails, outreach of any kind whatsoever from CSI Health, so thereby, staff is recommending that we provide notice to CSI Health of intent to terminate the contractual arrangement.
That sounds good. I say move.
Second that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
So what are you going to do now?
As far as to kill time in between here and 5:30?
We fired them, so.
Well, we will be providing them notice that we would be seeking termination. If they desire to continue the relationship, they should provide us something in terms of the deliverables that we are owed. There is no financial penalty in between either entity, but I do expect that once official termination notice has been given, that they will magically reappear.
Well, that's okay. They can go back away.
Let's do the mosquito control budget. We can do that.
We'll get through that in a minute and a half.
Oh, yeah.
I'm asking approval of the annual certified mosquito control budget. It's the same as a detailed work plan budget that you previously approved, and F tax is already approved, and I'm just asking for you to approve it officially.
Anyone have any questions? If I don't have one, I'll get to the proper page. I move Option 1.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Byrd. Is there any further discussion on this? Questions at all? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, it is.
Well, I think you may be talking about the MSPU, the added territory to the MSPU. That's under public hearings in another minute or two.
Right. Okay, so we haven't gotten, that's not that portion, so when we get to that, yes, sir. Not a problem. Thank you. All right, motion carries.
All right. The next one is agreement between Henry County and Clark.
Actually, we're at 5:30. We're going to start our budget meeting.
All right. Well, actually... Well, actually, that's a little bit fast, we're not quite. We've got a few more seconds, his thing will take literally fifteen seconds.
Let's go, Shane.
Let's go, Shane.
Take off running, get your sneakers on.
If you don't want to use Clark again, you got to give them ninety days' written notice. Staffs recommend you stay with Clark. We've had no issues with Clark.
Let's say move.
Second.
Well, that was quick.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? You've got a few seconds left.
I like Clark.
Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We may as well do number one and be done.
It is now 5:30.
By law.
So we're going to get started on our budgets. At this point, it's going to be a public hearing. It's going to be about the tentative budget millage for 2018-19, according to Florida statute two zero zero dash zero six five. Our discussion is the tentative millage rate and the rollback rate is 8.2107. That is the proposed millage rate, correct? Okay, so that's where we're at right now, and is there anyone in the public would like to address that?
Just to be clear, the proposed millage rate is zero percent more than the rollback rate. That is something we need to say.
Anyone? Anyone on the board? Is there any comment from the board?
I'm very, I'm excited to be able to do this. I appreciate staff and all the constitutional officers and everyone involved that was able to make this happen. So very pleased to be able to do this for our citizens.
We talked about it for a year, and they were to, to be able to roll back. I think that's all everybody was concerned about, that we was going to roll back. But we here to help the community do the best we can.
Yeah, while providing a service, that's what we have to always keep in mind, that we can't cut off our nose despite our face, but it is, you know, a savings for the community. And as our job up here is to make sure that Henry County is able to take care of Henry County, the workers, the buildings, and so I believe at this rate this year, we'll be able to do that as well. So is there anyone have any, I need, we're going to need a motion on this.
Oh, I thought he did.
I move Option One, approved resolution adopting tentative budget rate and budget as attached.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Harris and a second by Commissioner Swindle. Is there, no ones from the public? Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's get back to work over here. Once again, we're to the amendment of the disaster relief funds.
No, no, no. The tentative budget.
MSBU is.
No, the tentative budget.
Okay, okay. I seen you now, I got you. I got out of line there. It's Mr. Byrd's fault. So we're going to G, adoption of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2018-19. She, Ms. Davis?
So the appropriation and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 1819 is $72,734,123. So we'll ask for any public comment, and after that, we'll need a motion to adopt.
Anyone in the public wish to address that? Could y'all hear what she said? Can you come up to the mic, please?
Sheriff Wooden, for the record, this tentative budget, does it make our budget whole as requested?
There's the old lady there.
For the sheriff's budget, we included the three percent COLA, the FICA retirement and insurance increases that you requested, plus an additional $20,000. So that is what we discussed at the last budget hearing. And my estimate was about $20,000 more than what their estimate came in at, so just for sake of doing what we said we were going to do at the last meeting, I included that because it doesn't include all of their requests. And so it was a total of $434,338 was the total increase over the current budget, is what we have in this budget. So, so for the utilities, so in addition to that, we're working on the maintenance issue. And so the, they have carved out two maintenance positions and the utility budget of $330,000. And so that is, we're still working on a couple of questions back and forth on the repairs and maintenance line item. So when we get that worked out between now and the next hearing, that'll be just, you know, from our perspective, it'll either be in your budget or it'll be in our budget, so it doesn't affect the total bottom line. But we have given you outside of that, outside of the maintenance discussion, $434,338 over the existing budget. Yes.
So how, how close are you? You won't know until you work out the other, right?
Correct.
Tell you, just getting to come up here. Just getting to come up.
My name's Chris Soud, I'm with LaBelle CPA. I just do some budget work with the sheriff this time of the year, just to kind of help them project and all. But, and I'm not really sure from what Jennifer said exactly, you know, where we're at in this number, but we're going to spend this year every dime that was budgeted, and that was like, and we're going to need the increases that were in there. And it sounds to me like we're about shorted $200,000 from our request. And this is really odd to be sitting here at this meeting and not even know what you guys, we're going to get set in front of you. And this happened last year, and we got caught, and this year, it's happening again. I feel like our budget's been cut $200,000 from the request, and I don't know that, I don't know that we can live with that. It's, it's not like we have $300,000 worth of fluff in here to be able to, to be able to absorb. It's, and, and so, and I'm not, I'm not sure I'm right, but it sounds like we're getting $200,000 trimmed out of the budget that we proposed.
Well, keep in mind, now, the budget you proposed, we've been talking about for the last two months that you proposed. There's quite a bit of that money coming out because of your utilities, because you repaired, but there was still a lot of repairs and money, maintenance money left in there. And the question's going to be on that, if we're doing the repairs and maintenance, why is it left in there?
Because...
No, we have, no, let me finish.
Go ahead.
I didn't interrupt you. There's still employees that come out of that, and we understand that, we recognize that, we see their FICA come out, we've noticed their insurance, their, okay, uniforms, everybody, that should have come out. But utilities, we're checking that up, but repairs and maintenance, if we are doing the repairs and maintenance, why do you need 300, 200,000 dollars of repairs and maintenance?
Are you going, I mean, a majority of our repairs and maintenance, and you can see the line items, are vehicles.
Well, that's what we're asking, we're talking about facilities.
Yeah, no, just the facilities.
Forty-six hundred is usually a facility budget.
That's why 92,000 was taken out, and that's all. Not the whole repair and maintenance budget. If you expect, and that to go to zero, that's incorrect.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, I want to know, I want to know what it was.
Yes.
Because I understand there's, you know, there's other issues and different things, communication, different issues in there. I'm just trying to find out where the line items were, because it was very vague. So that's what we're doing, we're trying to just nail it down as well, so.
And we're still working with different...
We're getting the 400,000 coming out of that budget already. That 400 on top of the other 400 gets you back to the 800.
Right.
Because those things you aren't spending. So it's not that big of a deduction.
Okay, but there were other items of increase in there that were needed beyond, beyond, we needed, we had an extra bailiff in there for $61,000. That bailiff's already been hired, requested by the court.
That's funded.
That's funded, okay, that's part of the funding, that's good. And then, and then we had about $200,000 worth of operating increases above repair and maintenance and utilities that is...
Are we talking about cars, or are we talking about what?
And 50,000 of capital increase for cars.
Yeah, okay, and then, do you have a line item in there for repairs to vehicles?
We do, we don't hear in what you see, and, but it is, we keep details of what that is. So that's what we're going to carve out, we're going to carve out what is the building...
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Soud, we need to, we need to figure out those numbers and see where we're at. That way, we're all on the same page. We're not trying to hoodwink anyone. We've been talking about this for a couple of months. We understand that that's, that is a needed service, we know it. We're not trying to do, what we're trying to do is take some of the pressure off of that needed service. If we're taking care of repairs and maintenance, they can take care of what they need to, they can be out making the rest they need to make, making sure the safety of the people's there. So it's actually, it's trying to do a service both ways.
Yes, sir.
What we're trying to do is relieve pressure and also help the board side as well. So we're not trying to, trying to tear anything down here, we're trying to enhance the services both ways.
But, but a $400,000 increase, which is what Jennifer said we have, minus 330, minus the two...
No, 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 no.
The utilities.
No, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think overall, I think there's some confusion here on it, after the maintenance and the employees and all that taken out. Not, that doesn't include the vehicles, because that's something that we have to operate and maintain there. You can understand why.
Yeah.
Okay, after all that's said and done, we need, we need 272,787. That is the three percent, plus a little bit extra for the other stuff that we're requesting.
That was all funded, correct?
If that's all funded, then I think we're all square on that.
Yeah, we're getting there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not trying to, we're trying not to do a bad service, Sheriff, we're trying to help.
No, I know.
And we think it'll help the county as well, so.
The four, the number that came out, 437, I wasn't sure where that was coming from.
So just to be, just to be clear for the record, the original request from the sheriff was $867,000 more than the current year budget, okay? Not even, we're not talking about the maintenance budget carve-out.
Right.
Not even part of this.
That was original ask.
Right? And so of that 867, we're funding $434,000 of that, okay? So that's an increase. And so then, the conversation is on the maintenance side, the two positions, the utilities, and then we're talking about the repairs and maintenance. What that, whatever that number turns out to be that we decide on, that'll just go from their budget to our budget. So it's, it's a wash on our books, doesn't affect our total figure.
Something's not adding up with that, it doesn't sound like we're getting an increase.
So, so some of the line items that they requested, so we can go through this.
Because you're saying 800-some thousand minus 400-some thousand equals 400-some thousand, right?
Well, yeah, but you're losing expenses as well, she's about to break it down for you, so let her break it down.
To tell you where I'm looking at, so you take the 800 minus the four, so they're funding 400,000.
Right.
That's not including, she just said, taking out the utilities and the maintenance. Then you have to take that out, which is going to be...
We're not taking 300 from the 400. We're not, we're not...
That's coming from the 867, Sheriff.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Now, you're kind of getting with us now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, are you good?
We're square, thank you.
Well, we, no, it's all good, that's why these meetings are important.
Yeah, yeah.
We're hoping this is going to help you out as well, take some headaches off of your staff.
Yes, we want to make sure we were...
It'll go both ways, so.
All right.
You got it, Jennifer?
Are we good?
Are you good?
We'll know what we're doing now.
Well, we're going to need a motion on, so.
We do need a motion on the tentative budget.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Can I hear the motion again, to be clear?
Read it again. Read the, read the motion.
It's the adoption of the tentative budget.
I need a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget in the amount of $72,734,123.
Okay, that's the motion. So move.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. This is also a public hearing, is there any further discussion on that?
The sheriff's already spoke.
Well, as long as we, I mean, we getting him funded, and that's all he cares about, he's good, so. Any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now we have the adoption of assessments for the following MSBU's?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have eighteen of our nineteen MSBU's addressed by this, this item. These are all listed there, I won't name them all, but they're all staying the same. It's everything except for mosquito, which we'll deal with separately.
Does, does he have to read each one of them?
No, no, we can just, they're all in the packet, and if you can just approve the, all eighteen resolutions for...
Move to approve all eighteen MSBU's.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. This is also a public hearing, correct? Is there anyone in the public would like to address this? And this is, this is...
Everything but MSB...
Everything but the MSBU.
Everything but the mosquito.
Okay, I want to make sure we, make sure we got him where he needed to be, so if we're not there yet, all right. Is there any comments in the public on this? Any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're dropping back now?
No, we're going to mosquito.
Mosquito is the next one I need.
Skeeter.
I, item I, under public hearings.
I see that, but we didn't finish the top, did we? We'll finish here, then we'll go back.
Item I is mosquito control MSBU. This one, the rate is the same as last year, per, you know, varies based upon the property. But the difference this year is that territory is being added, and new, new properties would be assessed that were not assessed previously. And so the maps are attached there showing you these areas. This was discussed at the last board meeting. Notice was mailed out, it was included in the trim notice, and there was a newspaper advertisement run, and so this is presented for your approval.
I think this is the one where the gentleman wanted to speak.
Okay. It's also a public hearing. We're there now, sir, would you like to address that?
Yeah, the, the map was in the newspaper ad, it wasn't in the mail notice.
Come up here too, please, sir. Sorry, we got to get all this home record, thank you.
But if you got the notice in your trim notice, then you were, you're in the boundaries, the new boundaries.
Right, yeah, it said something about adding, because my property's adjacent to the areas that are already being sprayed.
Maybe Mr. Parker can address this, I don't know.
Thirty-nine forty-five County Road eight thirty-three. Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah, there's some being assessed, and they're going to spray all this area right here currently. Where are they spraying currently? That's LaDica. How about Montura? Montura, yes, Montura goes, it does aerial spray, says four hour, over. Like this, this is actually a half mile, I'm sorry. There's already like this parcel here, just a couple of things they just add to that. Yeah, we have 160 acres right here. It's my, my property, well, unless... This one here was like small tracks. Right. Not, not 160 acre tracks, is it? No, no, it's broken up into forty acre tracks and then smaller parcels, like you were saying. But I'm like a half mi, or mile from LaDica and five miles from Montura. If you were on, if you're in this shaded block, you'd be in the aerial spray thing. You had a residence on there? No. What's your address? Thirty-nine forty-five County Road eight thirty-three. And how many have you, 160? No, forty. Oh, forty, okay. Yeah, I have forty, and then acquired forty when my dad passed away. Okay, so you'd be in this area, right? Right. My concern was that it wasn't going to affect my property any with the spraying. We're going to add you into when we do the aerial spray for, when we do the aerial spray for the Deacon Pioneer, you'd be included in that. All right.
What, Shane, what does the letter say?
What did it, which, which?
That one there.
When that was sent out?
Yeah, I want to know what it says.
Well, it said something about, since my property is adjacent to the area, area being sprayed already, I was going to be included.
Did it have a price on it?
Yes, sir, forty dollars for one track and thirty-five dollars for the other track. He wasn't aware that he was near where we're going to spray out? Well, I knew I was near those areas, but I thought I was so far away, it wouldn't make any difference. Yeah, we'd do like a half a mile and sprayed out, we'd include that in that aerial spray block in county, so we would do a quarter mile around your blocks. If you picked up the same time, yes, if we were spraying mid-county, you'd be included in that. But you're not spraying the sugarcane or the orange groves. No, we'd do like a quarter mile, I don't know where you're at, it'd be a quarter mile or it could be at the half a mile buffer off your property, so we'd kill everything that's in there. Yeah, I just don't see how it's going to affect my property as far as killing the mosquitoes.
Do you have, you don't have a home on it?
Just a barn, workshop. And that was my only concern, was that... I mean, it's over a 10% increase on the property tax.
Are you the only person out there?
On my 40 acres, or 80 acres, actually.
Do he have to adopt this? Do he have to...
Does this... Is there other properties being affected by this, Mr. Parker? In the same area?
No.
In that same area, yes.
There are. So, all the properties are being affected in that area?
Is that the hammock that used to be 833 where the concrete bridge is? Is that where you...
There's three other...
They're dwelling in there.
Three other residences out there. They were going to be here.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I just felt like it didn't... Wasn't going to help me any for the amount I was paying, so...
Yes, sir, it was...
But you think it's necessary, Shane?
We were trying to incorporate all those homes. There's a cluster of homes. We're trying to bring all these homes in. There's one or two homes that are currently being assessed. We're bringing all those in. That's the only enclave of homes there.
There was one, two in that... On that property already being assessed?
In that 160 acre, not on his property.
Yeah, yeah, no. On that 160 acre.
Yes, yes.
Were they being serviced?
Yeah.
Okay, by land?
Yeah, by land. I'm assuming they're on that map, so I wanted to go ahead and make sure that they were all included.
Get on there, and then there's a black block on the left-hand, the west side of 833. Is that what we're talking about?
That, and that parcel that's currently being assessed would be removed.
So, the white... In the interior of the black is currently assessed.
Right.
But you're proposing the black and the white be not assessed.
Right. I mean, no need to do that one if we're not doing what else.
Yes. Right.
Can you do all that one motion?
Yes, what you do is... Option one, with the clarification that, on page 12 of the resolution, the land area depicted in black and white on the west side of County Road 833 would be removed and not included in the MSBU.
That motion, same as Mark Lapp.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address this while we're on this subject?
Because he wasn't sure either.
Any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your input.
Good thing you showed up.
Now, we're dropping back to D on the top. We never did cover that, did we? Now, we do. Disaster emergency fund ordinance?
Yeah, we got that.
Yes, we're done with that.
Okay, I didn't think we covered that, so...
We're down to correspondence action.
Nothing there? So, we're to the staff report, basically.
Oh, yes, yes. Aye.
Mr. Chapman.
Aye.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry. United Healthcare, we've done that already? We're there. Just jumping around stuff.
Yeah, it's confusing, isn't it?
Round and round the memory bush.
She's got to get the computer up.
As you know, we're switching our health insurance to United Healthcare, and so, we have a few housekeeping items we need you to approve tonight. The first item, and it was sent to you earlier today, was the resolution to withdraw from the PRM Health Trust. So, we need a motion to approve the resolution to withdraw from PRM.
So, move.
Second the motion?
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The second item was also sent to you to approve an updated agent broker record appointment for Allbritton Insurance. If we could get approval for that as well.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the final item is to authorize the administrator to execute any and all necessary documents to commence coverage with United Healthcare and to terminate coverage with PRM. There's still a few documents that we're working on with the broker for United Healthcare, and for time's sake, we need you to give that approval, so Charles will sign it.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one more for you, Mr. Lapp?
No, sir.
You're good?
Done, sir.
Hey, is there anyone in the public would like to address the board at this time? Any other issues or concerns or questions?
Business by district, Commissioner Swindle? Would like to take a second to recognize Ms. Bev Larson. Is she in the audience? Thank you for being here with us. Ms. Larson is very actively including Henry County and a lot of things that are happening on the west coast with regards to our business development, land development, and opportunities that are coming before, so glad to see her here. And thank you very much, Ms. Larson, for the interest in including us in what's going on. I know that we've all wrestled back and forth with Goodwills and had some very robust conversations, and I would like to just say that we got into a tough situation with transporting students back and forth from LaBelle High School that is in some welding and mechanics programs. And on the school district side, they are shorthanded and having trouble recruiting drivers because of same issues that everybody else suffers from, from recruiting and keeping folks and employed in our area. And Goodwill stepped up and is actually making a run for us at their expense and transporting students to make that opportunity available for some of those students that ordinarily wouldn't be able to do it. So, I have to make sure that we give those accolades where they belong to Mr. Mandell and company for making that possible. They're going to run the route the whole year, every day.
They go on from Cluston, LaBelle to Cluston?
They're picking students up at 2 o'clock or 3, or just short of 3 o'clock, and getting them back to LaBelle High School. So, very, very grateful.
Now, how many?
There's about eight, eight or nine. It'll probably end up around 10 once some of them get finished up with everything they have to do where they can start attending.
Just the welding class?
Welding and mechanics. Welding and mechanics. And along with... So, again, just, we're very grateful to Mr. Mandell and Goodwills for what they're doing for us there. And our vocational programs are doing fantastic. Our enrollment is absolutely growing exponentially. And so, we're very thankful. This week, we should unveil and enroll out a construction technology program where we're working with local contractors, and we're putting folks in the hands of those contractors, and they're doing on-the-job training with contracting skills. And in the end, obviously, a skill set that would lead to a career in the industry. By December, hopefully, is our goal. And within two weeks, we hope to start another adult CNA program to do another round of folks that want to get into the medical field. So, lots of great things happening. Steady moving forward with requesting grant through ITech for the Glades Training Center. I know that they're in the final stages of that grant process. B.O.C.C.'s written a letter to Henry County Schools. Multiple businesses are in support of it. And so, if it's not already, it should be in the governor's office very shortly. And hopefully, we can see some movement to provide even greater opportunities for training in Moore Haven for citizens of Cluston, LaBelle, and Moore Haven. So, very excited about those opportunities as well. Our public infrastructure loan process, can you just give me a quick snapshot of where we are with that?
We're still evaluating the proposals that have been received. Is that the latest update? You have it all resolved? Okay. Would you like to give them the latest? I do apologize, I've been out of the office this afternoon.
Today. Center State was the... We got three bids, one from Florida Community Bank, one from First Bank, and one from Center State Bank. And Center State was the low bid. And so, we've advised all the banks of the decision, and they are working on the loan documents. So, they said it'd be one to two weeks, and we should have everything back. So, if we're... I don't know if we'll have it at the next board meeting or the first meeting in October.
So, within a month, month and a half, we'll be ready to roll. That's all.
Can you let us know how low?
It was 3.65% for a 10-year period, the first year being interest-only, and...
But it is a line of credit.
It is a line of credit, so we'll only, you know, pay off of what we've drawn.
And how much longer do we have to wait, did you say?
He said it'd be about two weeks, one to two weeks before the paperwork was ready.
Can we go on and get in the deal with the jail, the roof, and all the other stuff? Could we start that now?
The bidding process or engineering, whatever has to be done?
The analysis of what needs to be done, yes.
Because that'd drag on forever.
The only thing that I... Mr. Chair, if I might. The only thing that I would caution about proceeding and incurring any expenses is that we still have to address payment. Should this linger on, we do have a cash flow situation that we would have to pay for out of our current accounts. I'm not saying that you don't go ahead and proceed, but what I would like the board to consider is going ahead and giving the authorization for execution of those documents to the administrator's office if we're going to proceed and start incurring expenses.
I think right now, basically, we're just talking about the bidding process, because the bidding process is going to take a while. I understand, and maybe I might be wrong, maybe the sheriff... I understand that the leak has been taken care of, stopped for now. That's what I understand, I understood today. The last several rains we've had, we haven't got the leak, so we're kind of... We got a patch for now, but that's not a fix.
He may be good. We can take that off, then. We don't have to do that.
Once again, that's not a fix. But it's not water intruding in the building right now.
Right.
So, the bidding process could take a while. What would be the timeframe you believe, and once you execute the process and move forward, what would the timeframe be on actually pulling the trigger and having money available?
I think as soon as the paperwork is done and it's executed...
Within weeks?
Either two to four weeks, I would say.
You'll have the money before you have a prioritized list and bids, I'll guarantee you that.
We can start on bidding, probably. That's going to take... That's going to take a while anyway, so at least we could get the wheels moving.
Yeah, if somebody...
I just simply wanted the board to have that consideration, because if we started getting into a situation where there's any delay with the bank, we're going to have to front funding at any point in time, so...
I don't think anything's in that big of a... I mean, it's been lit for years, yeah. Right.
The only expense incurred right now would actually be the advertisement.
That's right. It's okay.
Right.
Having said that, I don't want to see anything sitting around with us going on it. I mean, they need that fixed, and we've got other things that need to be finally repaired right. So, I don't, you know, let's move forward expeditiously when the money's in hand. And I don't have a problem with getting bids and things now, if that's possibly be...
Who's going to do the inside walkthrough?
There's a lot of legwork that needs to be done. And depending on the facility, we may have different people. So, you've got to, depending on whether it's a jail facility for correctional things versus, you know, some of our other facilities, we potentially could have several different folks looking at that. So, I think we'll get started on the legwork of what our plan is to proceed, to get going on the list that we've already provided you a month or two ago here when we had our workshop, and it will...
Have you heard anything on the health department?
I haven't heard. I've sent a couple. Andy, do you have any update on the health department?
Unfortunately, I can't actually be on the road for a long time.
Okay.
I can certainly check with Bill Stewart, who's the adjuster, and find out where we are in that.
Please do, and kick his trashcan over, or whatever you have to do.
We will. And actually, I know that, you know, it takes time getting these losses in sometimes, but their job is to make sure that it's repaired as efficiently as well as possible. So, I'll make sure that that message gets across to him.
Tell him we have high school students that could have done it by now. We're a little frustrated.
I understand that. And I'm not making any excuses, but hurricanes, Harvey and Irma, and the fact that it hit the whole of the state and Texas and everything, it really did hit the whole industry as to how many people were available to do all this work. But that doesn't help you out, so we'll make sure that Mrs. Stewart gets working on that efficiently. I'll text him right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And once again, Ms. Davis is correct. Depending on the facility, I mean, the, you know, certain parts of the historic courthouse is going to take a historical contractor, so it's going to be different. Different engineers and different people in different areas. Something just to throw out there, since we're talking about this, you know, to try to relieve the pressure on Mr. Parker and Mr. Bowen is something we might consider as a project manager, to babysit all of this rather than them having to stop their daily work that we keep adding on to and on to, that we don't add on to, but we call them every day and add on to. We could probably find someone as a project manager that actually does this. I know once we partnered with Lee County, and I know he was a little aggravating because I had to work with him every day, but he was good. Dan was a... He was a good project manager, and it's something we should investigate as well. As trying to, rather than pile more on our staff, let's alleviate some of the pressure and get them where they need to be, so...
That costs more money?
It's going to cost a little money, but...
Oh.
Well, you can volunteer to help, let's just say that, I mean...
I volunteer. Somebody supervises, because I believe when they did the court, that they had to go back and do some things, so it's better to pay just a little bit extra.
The project manager saved us a ton of money, Ms. Byrd. Actually, they did. You're correct. When we did that re... When we did the reconstruction of the courthouse, that project manager saved us a lot of money. They caught things that we wasn't going to catch.
Does Chris Stell do that?
They're not a project manager, they're a contractor.
Okay, so... But they know the project managers.
Sure they do. Well, all your major companies, they know a project manager, I mean... Sure they do, well, all your major companies, they know a project manager, I mean.
Last thing on my time, and, uh, and, uh, I understand that our staff has worked tirelessly, and the FEMA paperwork that was required for our reimbursements are complete, submitted, correct?
To the best of our abilities, unless they have other questions or clarification, staff has been meeting with FEMA two to three times a week for the past several months. I, I've seen FEMA in and out of my office consistently, we have been checking off the punch list, I believe we were waiting on some final numbers from our human resources accounting to make sure that every hour that was logged in was accounted for, and I believe all of that has been submitted for review.
Awesome, and I know legislatively, we had some visits yesterday from some federal and state legislators, and, and I think we all pushed them with, we're, we're a weekend storm away from being a crippled county and not being able to provide services, and we don't want that to, to linger out there, so any opportunity, any of us get the opportunity to push that and push them to please move forward with that reimbursement, we've gotta have it. And on top of that, we need to make sure that the cities quickly get their, uh, get their pieces reimbursed as well.
Well, we talked to them yesterday, and they're sort of like everybody else, they gotta go up and check with somebody else.
Yeah.
They can't give you an answer. But, uh, they, they claim the citrus is ready to pay off, and, uh, some of the other stuff, but then they not sure when. It could be a year, six months.
Oh, man, I hope not, it could be, you're right, but I hope not.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Byrd?
No, just don't have much to say today, um, everything's going well, looking for some cleanup in District One, as Shane do his job.
Oh, wait.
Wow.
Shane's not doing his job?
Shane, eh.
You know.
But other than that, everything else is fine, thank you.
He's writing the note.
He's the engineer of the year, I know he's doing his job.
Mr. Harris?
Well, I thought Mr. Turner didn't show up because La Belle beat Cluston in football.
Oh.
Really, really.
Not the reason. And we had a bunch of people.
Be on the wrong side.
They went well.
This is one time in how many years?
A bunch, a bunch.
Ninety-five.
Next year's coming up.
Ninety-five.
Don't live in the past now, don't live in the past. First year since the.
I think we did, Lynn, you're right, Mr., I second that.
Once a tiger, always a tiger.
And then, uh, all the Gator fans went down.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's really. That was my team, first time in thirty-one years, they won, beat the Gators.
Kind of like the Cowboys. Kind of like the Cowboys.
No, that's ten years.
Wow.
Anyway, uh, I don't have, me and Mr. Turner don't have anything to say tonight, that's it.
Once again, I'd like to thank staff for all their work that's, uh, on the budgets and everything coming into this. I know it's been kinda tough, we've been trying to, you know, make sure we're making the cuts in the proper areas, we're making sure we're funding the areas that need to be funded, and it's always a tough thing. Uh, we talk about it every year, and I've, I've been a pro, part of this process for, unfortunately, almost as, as long as I am alive, I've been doing it for about twenty-eight years, and every year it seemed like we'd just about get back to where we was just about to make good ground. And Dad gummit, they'd pull the rug out from under us. Um, so I'm very, very proud of staff's efforts this year, thank you all so much for all your effort to make sure that we're still able to function as a, as a, as a county. No matter what the, the, you know, people say from time to time, the public wants to know that their facilities are taken care of, they wanna know that their grounds are taken care of. If, if any of you in here have a phone, if you'll give them your number, they will let you know when Ridgeline's not taken care of. So they, they wanna make sure that things are done, and that, that's exactly what it should be, we all work for the public, each one of us up here, all we are is a public servant, just like the men and women that do this every day. Um, we're very thankful for y'all, this being the tribute of, uh, nine eleven, we know you guys put your life on the line every day when you put that uniform on, we appreciate that so much. Not everyone can do that, that's not something that everyone does, uh, so we do appreciate that, we appreciate your families that support you every day to do that. Um, it's, it's a, it's a very thankless job sometimes, uh, our firing EMS are the same way, um, they're, they don't get the thanks they should. I can tell you personally that, um, I had a, a cousin's home who's burnt down not too long ago, and, and they got there, and, and mobile homes burn fast. They saved three quarters of that house, they were there that quick. The EMS was on site, had they not been on site, she wouldn't be with us today, so, once again, that, that's an amazing testament to what our public servants here do every day. And it's not just a one-time thing, so thank you all for your service, we really appreciate it. Um, going forward, we, you know, we just gotta continue to tighten up our belt and, and move forward, but I believe we do need to make sure in areas that, you know, we've been, we've been crippling staff, putting them in situations to where, you know, we joke about it all the time, but we pile so much on them, then we, and we say, well, we're not gonna put nothing on them, and the, the next day, three of us will call and put something on them. So, I mean, that's just reality, and we just need to, we really need to work on that and realize that, you know, it's, when you, when you get so much loaded on you, it's hard to keep pulling the cart, so. Uh, moving forward, once again, thank you all for all you do, we appreciate it very much. Ms. Butler, you have anything before we close tonight? Did you want to say anything to Mr. Harris, or?
I'll get him after the meeting.
All right, meeting adjourned.